Through the agenda here and we'll maybe move a few things around. We're gonna get started with minutes of May 5th. Board of Appeals and then our special meeting minutes. Okay, we have a few claim sheets here, actually just two of them, May 8th and May 23rd. Let's go through those, take a look through there and fire off any questions to Shelby.
Airport on 523, all reimbursed, eleven thousand?
Oh, yep, that was an advanced one.
Eye wash stations, clinic, was that a surprise or?
No, we had talked about it probably early, yeah, like a year ago.
Oh, a year ago?
Yeah, and we were trying to get more bids from other people, but it's in the... It's in our agreement with the clinic that we take care of stuff and there's state laws on the eye wash station, so I just had to do it.
The thirty-three hundred on Bowleg, all reimbursed as well?
Yeah, it's, most of those are on advanced stuff, yep.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those same sign, motion carried. All right, we're gonna jump in, Dustin, Governor, Drive here, and we're gonna go to our new business. Street improvements, the bid opening results, we all have a copy here in front of us. I'm gonna turn it over, Dustin, it appears we only had a couple bidders.
Yeah, so this is the sheet I'll be referring to, I had it out there, but it's called bid tabulation at the top. So last Friday, we had the bid opening for the street improvement project on Harding Street, Loughburn Avenue and Lincoln Avenue. As part of the bids, we had a base bid and alternate. The base bid was for all the overlay type work related to the streets. And alternate number one had to do with the drain tile and stormwater lift station that were associated with it, so. The first kind of column in there has our engineer's estimate that was prepared prior to bidding. And then also, we have the two bids received from RJ Zavron Sons and then Night River Materials. As you can see, they were pretty close. For the base bid, our estimate was about three hundred ninety thousand. Zavros came in at about three hundred seventeen thousand. For the alternate one, our estimate was about eighty-one, and that came in a little bit higher than what was estimated at a hundred fifty-one thousand. So the total, total engineer's estimate for it was four hundred seventy-one thousand. And RJ Zavros was just below engineer's estimate at four hundred sixty-seven thousand, so. We've done quite a bit of work with Zavros over the years, made pretty good work. Don't have any concerns about the quality, they're definitely capable of doing this type of work, so. So that kind of summarizes the bid. I did also prepare another sheet that I passed out February 2. It kind of summarizes where things are at. So the very top portion is what was prepared and the report feasibility with estimates as far as the assessments go. So as part of that, the total estimated project cost at that time was about four hundred seventy thousand. And keep in mind that these estimates did not have any drain tile or stormwater lift in it, so those are a little bit skewed in that direction. So and then there's the assessment rates that were estimated with that at that time as well. The second block on that, that spreadsheet has the base bid summary with all the project costs, the construction, engineering, administration. I do have a five percent contingency in there right now, just in case there's any change orders. Hopefully that's not the case, but just keep in mind that that is included in here, that there was something that was unforeseen during construction. As you can see, the estimated assessment rate is at fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents per foot for just the base bid, which is a little bit less than the reported feasibility, which obviously reflects the good bid prices that we got. And then at the very bottom is the base bid and alternate one summary, so if you combine both the base bid and alternate one, what those assessment costs are associated for that portion of the project. There again, there's a five percent contingency built in that one as well, just in case there are any, any change orders. The estimated assessment rate there is twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents per front foot, and then seven dollars and forty-one cents per end foot of the properties, so. Slight increase from the report, but that's due to the addition of drain tile and stormwater lift station associated with it, so.
This one is how we were figuring what their taxes were going to be increased to, right?
Correct.
The property owners, right?
Correct, yeah. So those are, those are both fifty, fifty split. The city covering fifty percent of the cost and the remaining fifty percent being assessed for the benefit of property.
So then our next step is the public hearing, if we want to.
So, yeah, if it's, if we're moving forward, there's a couple different ways you can do it. You could hold your final hearing prior to awarding the project. We would need to prepare the final assessment roll to do in that, and then you would award after the hearing. Or you could award now and have your final assessment hearing at the completion of the project. With there being a little bit different sculpt than was originally presented, it might be a benefit that you're hearing prior to awarding, I'm thinking that would probably be your best bet. I'd recommend that you can either do, you could set that date right now, base it off of these costs, or we could have the final roll prepared before that meeting. The only issue is we don't have the final exact dollar amount, so that's why I'd keep that contingency in there. And if that came down, then you could always reduce that then. Hate to have the assessments increase and have to have another hearing at that time, so.
That's in my draft.
It is in there.
That's in my, I, I got that this morning from David, I did include it based on these bid numbers.
Looks like five and a quarter. Roughly what I see on there. Fifteen or twelve, six and a quarter.
Did he send that to you too?
Yep, I sent that email.
So these numbers are good, so what do we have, a month to do a hearing then? Or how long are these?
So the bid, yeah, the bids are good for sixty days from the opening, so sixty days since last Friday.
Okay.
That's how long your bids are good for. With the hearing, you do have to meet your advertising requirements, so there's like a two-week timeframe for that. If you want the final roll done prior to setting that out to have actual numbers for the property owners, that's probably gonna take two weeks, I would say, to get that done, by the time you get information from the county on it.
So if we want this done this summer, we gotta?
Probably, yeah.
Why can't we send it out with this number?
Yeah, this one you were figuring high, right?
Yeah, so this.
So we are okay.
If you set this out, this wouldn't have the actual roll with the parcel numbers and all that information that goes with it. So you could do that, you just set the completion of the project happen to have another hearing at that time, which you certainly could do. Well, at that, at that time, you would, yeah, I mean, the project would be.
Something to pay for it then.
Yeah. Normally, that's when you'd hold it, is at the end of the project, that way you have your final dollar amount for everything associated with it. With this having that little change in scope, this is maybe a little different, where you would probably wanna hold your hearing prior to awarding construction.
Right, just to let the residents know it is gonna be more expensive than what we originally talked about.
The price per, or the front benefit and end benefit both raised by forty percent about? If we met in two weeks, could we just tell them it'd be forty percent more than what it was before?
I would send out these revised numbers.
You'd wait two weeks for you guys to do that?
So I would, yeah, I mean, I would have us, I would have us do the final assessment roll with all the real numbers, have that contingency built in there. Then you send that out to your residents saying, here's what your assessment will be. And then at the end of the project, if it happens to get a lower, then you have to just send out another revised lowering their assessment.
I don't think the county knows.
No, I don't think so either.
And that, that's the reason we've built in that old contingency in case there was. Hopefully, we don't have to use that, I mean, that's an ideal world, but for planning purposes, I think it's good to include it for budgeting, so.
And we've got time to wait on you to get those real numbers?
Yeah, I could get going right away, it'll take, it depends on how fast the county can get me stuff, but I would say, once I have that from the county, it'll be a couple days, hopefully, so.
Can we somehow move so that it can get posted for the public hearing, like as soon as you're done, or start? Or do, do we have to wait until our July meeting?
Yeah, so when you send, you have to send out letters to them, and they have to have those numbers in it, so you can't really send that out prior to having those numbers, so you have to have, you have to send the letters out in two weeks, and you'd be looking at about a month when you hold your hearing, basically.
What about your July meeting?
So just hold up before it?
Yeah, you could do it in your July meeting.
Takes some time.
I know last time at the public hearing, we had the public hearing over there, and then we concluded that, and we came over here for our council meeting. That's how we did the last one.
I think that makes sense, that way if a lot of people show up, you have a window.
So. And then at that time, you'd be still within that sixty-day window of being able to award to Zavros, so you'd still be meeting those, those timeframes.
What do everyone think, should we pull that out?
I'll make a motion to do that. If we need one, I don't know. We're gonna look at the numbers and just call the public hearing then.
Numbers in the public hearing now.
Yeah.
What time? Is it still six?
Well, we could do that.
I think the public hearing you want, so that people who work out of town can get there.
So prior, prior to having that, we need to file the assessment roll, so you're probably looking at holding a special meeting just to file the assessment roll. Yeah, in probably two weeks.
All right.
And then at that time, you could set your.
Oh, yeah, let's do that. We can do the official time and everything once we get that.
All right. Any other questions for Dustin, or Dustin, do you have anything else for us on that?
I think that's all I have, unless anybody's got any questions.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Look at the airport pulse, let's, I know there's one thing that's, let's see, Carl said there, there has been no bonding or transportation going on, or they have not done all that. All they did is the budget at the state level, and as I understand, is the governor would possibly hold a special, call them all back and have a, a deal, maybe you, more on that, Jeff, as far as what, it has to happen sometime in June, I think, it can be done by July 1st, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so. Again, we're still in limbo, the only thing is now with, you wanna cover this, Jeff, this, this, this resolution that they're?
Yeah, so you have a application deadline to the Office of Management and Budget, that's June 13th. So you're brushing up against that, that deadline. And under your previous grants, you know, we have the obligation to act in good faith to try and fulfill completion of the airport. So Angela's drafted this resolution, which basically says, we should ask our legislators and the Department of Transportation to give us enough money to finish the airport. So this really doesn't commit you to anything, but it shows that you're acting in good faith to finish the airport, so. I think it shows that we're trying to comply with the grant agreements, I think it's a hard thing to do. I don't think it, it obligates us to do anything that we haven't already signed up to save you.
This is obligating us to funding in 2026 though, isn't it?
Just the request of funding.
We're, we're asking for money. To be able to apply, but I don't, we don't meet the deadline, then we can't even apply for the money.
Yeah.
Because they have not figured anything out yet.
Right.
For the 2025.
The deadline is before the special session one. So this is just, just to get in to ask for money next year.
Get our hat in the ring.
Where is that in?
Should be right behind this one right here.
But really, we have fulfilled everything we said we were going to do up until now, right?
I think so, yeah.
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 Yeah, it seems to make sense if they say, if we end up, they say that they don't get it and figure it out, and then at least we've continued our, and it's just requesting the money for next year.
So if we've fulfilled all of our needs, why are we doing this? It's saying that we will fulfill them?
We fulfilled the past obligations, but obviously, we still gotta finish it on sale, so we gotta ask for more money. So we're just making our ask.
Just allow us to ask for money in 2026?
Yeah.
If they had figured out the state bonding by now, and we had all the money.
We wouldn't be doing this.
Right.
We would do this in case the state bonding doesn't go through. I'll motion for it.
Okay. Motion by Rob, is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second it. Are there any further questions, concerns? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those same sign, motion carried. What's there, all the stuff you want me to?
Uh, I don't.
Was there anything else?
Just that, it's not on your agenda, the resolution for.
Oh, right, yeah, the resolution for the.
Beating the thirty lots to the EDA.
Real estate for the EDA.
Yes, it's on the very back of your packet, I just confirmed with him that you can do that. The assessor's office has the Peterson lots in, back in the city's name. And Todd just signed his paperwork today, so he said it's fine to pass that. That's the only other topic that I would have had for him.
Well, let's, being he's here, let's just, it's right there, does everyone have it out? As far as, let's just cover it right now, then when Jeff is here, so if he leaves, if they have questions, let's not.
This is just giving the land back to us so we can?
No, this is going from the city to the EDA.
From the city to the EDA.
Okay, yeah, but so they can do what they want with it again.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Whenever, whenever a city.
So why aren't we keeping it in the city rather than giving it to the EDA?
Well, Troy's was the city's, right? And then it was Todd's, was the EDA?
Right.
Yeah.
And it's not.
I'm just kinda curious as to why we're.
So we're giving it all back to the EDA now? Or we're just giving the piece that Todd had back to the?
All three is what, what I was told.
Yeah, all three lots to go back to the EDA, which is, that's their sole task, is the economic development, and it allows them to review any requests and, and bring, bring it to us with the approval.
So what's different between the city owning it and the EDA owning it, basically?
The city, you know, when we made the conveyance to Troy, we added those restrictions on, you know, remember, you guys had those restrictions on what he has to do. Those are optional, but not required, when the EDA has it, they're required in the statute, so.
So we're better off having the EDA have it anyways for?
Right, that's my own reason. I was just wondering why, why would we, you know, why do we do one thing, basically?
Well, and I don't know how active your EDA is, but then it's one decision you don't have to make.
I'll make a motion to.
Motion by Kristen, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Markell. Any additional questions on that?
Mr. Aaron. So the green light properties right across from my house are narrow, and that's why it was specially built houses were what Troy was looking into. Before the land was given to Troy, it was talked about being the city's green space. And I'm wondering if we could sit on it for a month and chew on that.
That's, I, I always thought it was, you know, previously, they had talked about keeping it as green space.
Yeah.
But I guess I didn't know, I never followed along to see that it had changed over, basically.
And I didn't realize this was coming up, probably put a lot into it ahead of time, so I just haven't put a lot of thought into it, maybe it's not necessary, but I do remember that, 'cause that's why I first started coming to council meetings, before I was on council, 'cause I was hearing about what they were doing with this. And since it's such a narrow land, I'm just wondering what the options would be for the EDA, and if there are limited options or narrowing options, if it would be better off to go on in this green space. I have a personal dogma, but obviously, since it's our street, so I wouldn't actually go along myself, but.
Right. Well, it's taken how many years to get to this spot, doesn't seem like really great, hurry it.
Right, yeah.
I do think the EDA wants to re-advertise all three lots, so I, we need to, I, do we need to have something, do we have a resolution for that, how does that work?
Well.
If the city council doesn't want the EDA to get rid of them?
We can always just hang on to it for another month, and like you say, review it then. But I can understand how it would be nice to get it re-advertized so that someone can start construction before winter comes. So, and July meeting is probably the good meeting to get it resolved.
Yeah, I'll leave it to you guys, if you guys wanna push it through now, it's.
I, if you'd like to, I mean, if you have questions or concerns or would like to think about it, I don't think we're in a great hurry.
It's not that hurt.
You're gonna find, you're gonna go talk to people and do your thing?
Yeah, I'll go, I'll, I'll do some digging.
No, I'm fine, I'm waiting till.
I'm fine with that.
Do we, would it help them if we moved on to one property, or they?
That's already in the EDA.
That's already.
Yeah, the EDA has it. So a table there's still the July meeting, is that the consensus?
All right. I think we got her.
Okay, you got her, you good?
Thanks, Jeff.
Jeremy. You got a sheet, summary sheet anyway, and then you have a couple other attachments that are actual estimates on costs. But the siren quit working again, and had stones come up to look at it, and the control board went out. They are gonna try to get warranty on it. It's, I don't think it's even been a year since the installing company came up to fix it, redo it. But the cost, so it's working right now temporarily, and if we wanted to stay with that, it's twenty-one eighty-four. Or we could put a brand-new controller in for twenty-five seventeen, and you have five years of warranty with it. Yeah, the way it's going, yes, and Mike, the, the repair guy installer, honestly can't believe we've been having issues with it, because they have these same ones out everywhere, so. So anyway, that's what that is, so it's, it's kinda like approval to go with the new controller, so we get warranty. And then the old paging system in the water tower is forty years old, and that hasn't been working, he looked at that and he said, um, he can't repair it, can't get parts and stuff. 'Cause he tried, and the cost to update that's forty-eight sixty-four. And we, we do need that, because it is the primary VHF paging system for firing MS. I'm not concerned about the money, we have that in our annual operating budget already, but just need approval to tell them to order, 'cause it's probably four to six weeks out for parts and equipment at least. And then we have two older trailers we'd like to just sell and get rid of, 'cause we're not using them anymore. So we just need approval for Shelby to either put them out on bids, or if we could throw them on an online auction, I guess, doesn't matter to me. And then the last two things is just to plant the seed, but it's time to start planning hard about updating the nineteen ninety-two fire engine pumper. We had been trying to hold to roughly ten-year replacement program, and we're pushing it to twelve years right at this point in time, which has been fine. Spread it out a little more, but a new one is a half a million plus. I'm not convinced we can afford that. But we need to start planning for it, which means one or two of you, we're gonna have to chat a little bit on how that's gonna work, and what kind of dollars we can afford to work with, and then see what we can find from there, so. But other than our turnout gear and air packs, that is the most important piece of equipment that we need to have. Because if it is ever utilized, which means it's pumping water, it's pumping water mostly for life safety reasons. So.
So is that something where we just budget, put it on forward? In a different, whatever line item?
We'll have to look and figure it out.
Right.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to figure out where to.
It's not a month or two we got, we know we're gonna do, yeah.
When you say planning, is it, like, could it even be a three-year plan to build up the funds for it?
Well, possibly.
Just so we know.
Is there grants that they could apply for?
Yeah, that doesn't work for this stuff. I'm not, not to be rude or anything, it's just it's pointless to even try.
Yeah, so the used and refurbished thing you're talking, you're gonna look like online, the online things, and look for something that's cheaper.
Pot, yeah, so that's likely the route we're gonna have to go, but. So, so just to put it in perspective, in ten years, the last one was three hundred and thirty with zero equipment on it. And that has probably close to a hundred thousand dollars of equipment on it. And a year and a half ago, I got a quick estimate, the brand-new one was five fifty, zero equipment.
So can you take your certain equipment off and put it on a new one?
But some of it is getting really old also, 'cause it's not all just ten years old, so. It's a vicious cycle, it's, it's, you slap fire ambulance on things, and it's two, three times the cost, so. And then just to wrap up, it was a quiet spring with wildfires, which was fortunate, but it's still dry. There's been a lot of fire. There's been a lot of fires in the state, and they've been running pretty rampant, so.
If you guys are bored, you could maybe drive up to Canada. I don't know.
You chuckle, but there actually is a loophole that allows a few of us to do that.
Oh, really?
And, and the biggest reason was because of, um, if you know where Vida is, which is basically straight north of here, it'd be straight north of Caribou. Um, it's a big area, very limited fire resources up there. There is a sort of temporary agreement in place to allow a few people to go with some equipment if needed, so. Um, otherwise, I got a couple new recruits on, um, local guys, younger guys, so that's good. If you run across anybody, could replace a few of us that are older, and that have, some that have retired. So. Any questions? I would just like to get approval so I can tell Stones to order equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve it, if something's asked.
On the siren and the repeater. And then, um, just approval to list those two older trailers. That's all I have, any questions?
If, do you want, I don't know if people, yeah, like with the city page or whatever, but if you get like a little ad together, Shelby, I could put that on the Facebook page too. If it helps advertise, I don't know.
Yeah, that one you did, got one interested person, whatever that was.
Oh, for the recruits or whatever?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Not for the trailer?
Trailer, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
If you want.
Andy, I can put something together.
Okay, yeah. We can post it.
Yeah, if you, yeah, 'cause I'll have to put it in the paper, so I'll need something regardless.
And we'll grab a couple pictures.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cut.
Yeah, I think that's easy, yeah.
I just wanna say as the old chief, that way back when, and this, I'm talking early nineties, when we put together the total plan and as far as engine replacement, um, we come up finally after, after a lot of thought, and, you know, we come up with a ten-year replacement for the three engines, 'cause all of a sudden, your oldest one is now thirty years old. Um, that, I understand that, yeah, they're not gonna have a lot of miles or a lot of hours on them, but it's the cost thing, because of what it goes up, you know? Yeah, you can put it off for three, four years, but then all of a sudden, you're talking another, and it's gotten worse instead of better. You know, you're all of a sudden, now you've put it off three years, well, it's costing, it's gonna cost you another three hundred thousand dollars, you know? So I'm just, just for thought.
You know, just to, for perspective, Ariel.